Call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, January ninth, 2020, 6:30 PM. Our first order of business, if everyone will stand, is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please sit. Would the Secretary take the roll, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt. Commissioner Walz.
Here.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Randall and Commissioner Hunt are both absent and excused. Okay, next order of business is approval of the agenda. If you'll notice, we have some changes on the agenda, so we'll go through our new order of business. But we need approval first. Someone cares to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Walz.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of December 12th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments or corrections? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Walz.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, next we have public comment for items not on the agenda. Is anyone here that wishes to make a comment on an item not on the agenda tonight? I'll ask again. Is anyone here who wishes to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Our first business item is PC 19-013, Request for a special land use recommendation and site plan approval to establish a drive-through at the existing King Kong Restaurant, or King Cone Restaurant at 31051 Ford Road in the C2 General Business District. We'll start with a special land use recommendation. And after we have our consultant's report, then we'll go to the public hearing. So, Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Okay. Start us off.
Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to discuss the application by Mr. Maitoji for a drive-through to be established at the existing King Cone Restaurant located at 31051 Ford Road. The site itself is approximately 10,000 square feet in area. It's occupied with the 540-square-foot building utilized for the ice cream business. And the site is occupied with existing parking for customers. The site is in our C2 zoning district. The applicant is proposing to establish a drive-through window on the eastern side, east elevation of the existing building. And this would accommodate the idea, the proposal to operate year-round on the site. Within the C2, drive-through restaurants are allowed as a special use. So first, I'll go over the special use requirements for drive-throughs, and then we, in addition, do the general requirements. And then we'll take a look at the site plan requirements later on, on the agenda. With regards to special land use, first thing we'll look at is the compatibility of this proposed use with the existing zoning, the existing uses, and also with our master plan. This is the Ford Road corridor just east of Merriman Road. It's all property to the north, east, west, and including the subject site are not only zoned and planned, zoned and utilized as commercial businesses, but they're also planned in our master plan for commercial businesses. So this is our most highly-traveled vehicular corridor. The intent is to provide business services to residents and to travelers through the city. And so the expansion of a commercial business on the site would be compatible with the adjacent zoning, existing uses, and master plan. Now, we do know that to the south of the site, it is actually zoned multifamily residential, and there are currently apartments directly adjacent on the southern part, boundary of the site. And that's actually, not necessarily normal, but because along our commercial corridors, the commercial businesses are typically, they're either bound by a single-family use or a multifamily use. In this case, it just happens to be multifamily. And generally speaking, sometimes you do want, the concept of lowering intensity of use from highest intensity to lowest, you start with your commercial businesses, then you do office, and then you do multifamily businesses, excuse me, multifamily uses, because they have higher frequency of vehicular trips and more activity, and then you have single-family. So the fact that it's adjacent to multifamily is kind of standard planning and zoning practice. When looking at the other criteria with regards to special land use, the site is adequately serviced by public utilities. The impact on traffic from this type of use wouldn't necessarily be any kind of significance because, as proposed, the applicant would be operating merely year-round. So while in the past, in the colder months, you know, the business didn't even operate, they would just have visitors visiting the site in the winter months. And while, so chances are, given the winter months of Michigan, they might not have as many visitors compared to the summer months for ice cream. But hopefully, with this approval, that business will have greater activity. But it's not anything that the traffic in the Ford Road corridor can't compensate for. We're looking at things such as the impact on public health, safety, and welfare, the isolation of any existing uses. You know, as I mentioned, this is our commercial corridor. We're talking about establishing a business year-round. It's something that is compatible in that area. And then the need for the proposed use, you know, it does allow for, once again, the increasing commercial activity on a site. And so that's, in general, that's good for the city because we're having more activity within the city, more businesses thriving, and hopefully more customers, and opportunities for residents. So with regards to the special land use, provided that all site plan issues are addressed as we suggest further, we would recommend that the Planning Commission consider making a recommendation of approval to the City Council for this proposed special use.
Okay. Next, would the applicant like to come forward and comment about their application? Come up to the podium, please, and tell us who you are.
My name is Mike Jay, owner of King Cone. I own the business, going on five years now. Given the overall change in seasons and the weather patterns, it's becoming more difficult because the business is so dependent on weather and on people walking up and buying ice cream. So much is dependent on the weather that the drive-through is essential, you know, to the viability of the business. I mean, this past season, we didn't have, the summer technically didn't start till June, right before Memorial Day, it was cold in April and May, which makes it very difficult. And, you know, to have the option of a drive-through would make, you know, the viability of the business a lot better. Because that's the only item we sell is ice cream.
Are you going to continue to just sell ice cream?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's not really big enough to incorporate anything else in there. So ice cream is the only thing that I'd be selling.
Okay. Did you have anything else? All right. Well, Mr. Steenberg, did you have a question?
Yeah. Do you intend to make your driveways ingress and egress one-way?
Yes.
In order to accomplish the drive-through?
Yes. They're currently one-way now, but yeah, it'll continue to be that way, yes.
Also, will you lose parking?
One spot at the end.
How about seating area? It's popular to sit out there when the weather is appropriate.
The seating, we won't lose any seating area because our seating area is enclosed within a railing, like a little patio there, so that won't be affected.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to the next order of business. It will be about the site plan, but is there anything else about the special land use? Any questions for the applicant?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you. You can have a seat, and then we'll go to the public hearing. All right. At this time, we'll invite members of the public to the microphone to make a comment about the issue relating to this public hearing. When you come up, please fill out the comment card and give it to the minutes clerk. You have a maximum of three minutes to speak, and please only state facts about the situation, and identify yourself and your street name. So, does anyone wish to comment at this time in the public hearing? I'll ask again. Does anyone wish to speak at the public hearing? Okay. We'll close the public hearing at 6:44. And move on. Are there any written communications concerning the item?
No. We've received no written communications.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to discussion by the commission. Do we have any questions or comments about the special land use? I think probably my only questions really deal more with the site plan than the special land use. So, other than the fact that the special land use would be contingent on approval of the site plan, I don't have anything. Anyone else? Okay. Well, do we want to make motion to approve the, or recommend approval of the special land use with conditions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
With condition that it's?
Site plan approved.
Site plan approved. Okay. Any comment on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Walz.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus. Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item, site plan review. Mr. Ortega, would you give us your report, please?
Yes. So with regard to this proposed use on-site, there are several issues we need to, I'd like to bring to your attention. We've just dealt with the use of the actual proposed drive-through. It would be contingent upon this site plan approval. There are setbacks in dimension requirements of the zoning ordinance are in compliance with the existing building, and the proposed driveway does not have any specific standard dimensional requirements of the scheduled regulations. I'll get into some other dimensional requirements in a moment. The first issue that comes up with regards to this proposed reconfiguration of the site in order to accommodate the drive-through involves the number of required parking spaces. On page four of our review letter, I go into the fact that there are a couple of different ways in which we could calculate the parking requirements of this proposed use, either as utilizing the outdoor waiting area for, for, let's see what they're calling it, for a carryout restaurant standard. Indicates a certain number of parking spaces that the site does provide. Or you can look at this as a fast food with drive-through parking standards that requires 12 parking spaces, and this use is, when it's reconfigured, will provide 13 parking spaces. So whatever use we, whatever parking standards we apply to it, it is in compliance with our standards. I mean, we do note that because of the seasonal nature of the use, it's kind of difficult to anticipate applying a standard that's going to meet the entire demand, you know, when the weather is warm or that sort of thing. So that's why, you know, either the fast food or the carryout is applicable in this situation. And in this case, they meet both those standards. So even though this reconfiguration, removal of a parking space, technically, the reconfiguration does meet our parking space minimum requirements. In addition, they have provided the number of minimum required barrier-free parking spaces. They're required to have at least one, and one has been provided. With regard to site circulation, however, so as proposed, the applicant is going to have the westernmost driveway be their ingress to the site, that will travel southbound and then circle to the east around the building, and then the customer car will actually pull up to the window and order at the window. As a result of this, the aisle width on the west side of the building is pretty minimal. It is 19 feet, seven inches. So while adequate for both, while adequate for the drive-through lane, their proposed stacking, if they did have 10 cars lined up at that window, would wrap around the south, the bottom of the southern portion of the building, wrap around the west side of the building, and then you'd have a space occupied by a vehicle, approximately 10 feet. And so if there were cars parked in the parking spaces on the west side of the building, they wouldn't be able to get out. Because our minimum requirements for driveway aisle widths is at least 24 feet to allow for vehicles to back out their spaces, and then also to have enough space for a car to be located in a stacking zone. This is somewhat more compatible on the east side of the building because the west side of the building has angled parking. The east side of the building has parallel parking, and that, that those vehicles do appear to have the ability to exit their space when necessary. So for this nature, for this reason, you can't have stacking spaces hindering the circulation of parked cars, excuse me, parking, because if there's a medical emergency or some kind of, just even day-to-day operations, that's untenable. So we would recommend, and the applicant has indicated that this is going to be a seasonal use anyway, we would recommend that any approval for this configuration involve that the drive-through window only be utilized to the cold weather months. And at that point, when the drive-through window is being utilized, the walk-up isn't being utilized for customers. So therefore, one of the, therefore, people can't, won't be parking in the west-side parking spaces and not be able to get out of the space. This, if the applicant is agreeable to this operational requirement, then it's something that can allow for the function as requested by the applicant, which is to operate the drive-through window in the winter months and operate the walk-up window and have people park on-site in the summer. There is some landscaping requirements for the ordinance located within the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission does have the ability to modify those requirements. We do note that because of the size of the site, there aren't many opportunities to have landscaping. There's only one small grass area located on the western portion of the boundary, sideline of the site. So the Planning Commission is up to, it's up to your consideration as whether you believe the site should be enhanced with any type of landscaping. There's none really required in terms of the fact that this is an existing use. If this was not an existing use, we would have parking requirement, excuse me, parking screening requirements for landscaping. But in this time, because it's existing, there's no need to, unless you believe so, it's important to have any kind of parking lot screening or that sort of thing. But the most feasible location for landscaping would be in that existing grass area on the western perimeter of the site. Do you believe there is a trash dumpster located on the southeast portion of the site? Technically, we do require a dumpster enclosure, so a dumpster enclosure should be proposed and constructed for that dumpster. Or, and I don't know if it could even be feasible with the health code, I don't know if they have some other means of trash disposal, but the dumpster should be, any dumpster located on the site should be located within an enclosed structure. Lighting, the existing lighting on the site has been indicated on the site plan. They are, there are currently some roof-mounted fixtures that are located at an angle on the roof of the building. Forgive me, actually, they're not located, they haven't been illustrated on the site plan. They're not located on the site plan. But a visit to the site indicates that they are there. And if you notice, when you're driving by the site and on an evening, they do tend to have a high-intensity glare because they're angled. Our ordinance does require all lighting to be shielded and directed downward. Obviously, it's angled so that way to throw as much light onto the parked cars. We recommend some method to either shield the lighting or at least direct the glare away from Ford Road traffic because it does tend to provide a high-intensity glare on passing vehicles along Ford Road. A reasonable possibility could be to establish, put some roof-mounted arm elements, and then utilize existing fixtures, and then have the lighting fixtures throw their light at more of a downward angle, hopefully at a 90-degree angle, shielded and directed downward. So that way to reduce the glare on passing Ford Road traffic. No signage is proposed with this reconfiguration of the use. Then we, on page five, we get into specific dimensional requirements for drive-throughs. The first one being that the minimum frontage for lots to have a drive-through is technically 150 feet. The applicant's site is actually 100, has 100 feet of frontage on Ford Road. So technically, he would have to receive a variance from the ZBA for that lot, for that dimensional requirement to operate the use. And any approval you grant for site plan should be contingent upon receiving that variance. Similarly, there is a dimensional requirement that the minimum distance between driveways providing ingress and egress off-site shall be 65 feet. As proposed, the existing driveways are about 20 feet in separation. That's because of the size and scale of this existing site. So in, with, similar to the other dimensional requirement, the applicant would need to obtain a variance from the ZBA in order to, before they could operate this proposed use. The intent of that standard is to make sure that any new use that comes in has that safety separation between driveways so that determining movements for vehicles don't create an increased conflict points. However, these driveways already exist. They are, their safety is going to increase because they're going to be limited to ingress and egress. So I'm not sure if, so it would be up to the ZBA to determine if that require, that the existing conditions of the site and his proposed configuration warrant the practical difficulty in allowing for a variance for this particular standard. Screening for drive-through uses is required between the proposed use and the adjacent residential uses that exist. The ordinance does allow for the screens to be located either on the site or on the, on the property of the adjacent residential use on their side of the, in this case, the alley. It does allow for that kind of configuration alternative.
If I can interrupt you. I don't think that would be applicable in this area because there's parking on, behind the apartments that is accessed directly off the alley.
Right.
There's like nine parking spaces there, as well as their dumpster access. So that's not an option in this case, I don't believe.
No, I don't think it would be very feasible either because it would hinder the multifamily use. So the alternative would be to utilize vegetative screening, similar to how we came upon a solution for the Checkers Restaurant located just to the west of the site. It does appear, based on the dimensional, making a review of the proposed site plan, that there could be enough space for a vegetative buffer to be existing at, right at the point in which the car vehicle, excuse me, the vehicles would be turning around the site to turn to the east and then to the north. So it does look like the applicant could provide that kind of vegetative screen and at least have that type of alternative as an option, if you think that's appropriate.
The fact, excuse me.
Yes.
The fact that the, that this site, this site's unique in a number of different ways. The petite size of the building, the footprint of the entire property, and the fact that it butts an active alley, which gives them four ingress/egress areas. The screening I don't, I see as more of an impediment to everybody rather than an asset. Walking that property yesterday, all those apartments are perpendicular to that alley. So any headlights that would come in from the alley or leave from the alley would not be impact anybody that lives there in that multifamily structure. And adjacent to the alley is more parking, a significant amount of parking that runs both lateral and perpendicular to the alley in two different locations. I don't see screening as any kind of an asset at all in this particular case. In most instances, we're abutting R1. We don't have an active alley. We don't have four ingress/egress, and it changes the equation considerably. I, I look at this, and I'm just guestimating on the scale. If the building is 18 foot wide, I'm looking at that outdoor seating area to the west and wondering if we couldn't shrink that down a little bit and bring those tables closer to the building and still have enough of a walkway for pedestrians and allow for parked vehicles to get out even if there was a maximum stacking of 10 vehicles. It looks to me like that distance may be somewhere in the area of eight and a half, nine and a half feet, if I'm putting it to scale there. So I'm wondering if we couldn't get three or four feet there and have a minimum amount of distance so people could still back up with the, with the maximum stacking in place. of distance so people could still back up with the, with the maximum stacking in place. And on the shielding for the lighting, to remain somewhat cost-effective, I'm wondering if we couldn't accomplish the same thing by adding a sheet metal, you know, a properly proportioned and, and bent piece of sheet metal to the existing lighting to, to bring the lighting, it doesn't have to be exactly ninety, but we don't want it bleeding out into one or two lanes of Ford Road, and ideally, we don't want it bleeding out to the residential that's behind it. I think that could possibly be, be done with some sheet metal. That's all the, and the trash dumpster, I'm wondering how much trash you actually generate and if there could be an alternative to a full-size dumpster?
There currently is, actually. There is no dumpster on the property and hasn't been for three years.
No.
Okay.
There's an enclosure behind the building and he's got those, those residential-type rolling cartridges. So that's something I wanted to address. Mine is Mohammed on the architect, by the way.
Okay.
There is no, there is no dumpster on the property, there hasn't been one. He received approval from the city to locate the trash where it is currently located three years ago.
I wasn't sure if there was one inside the stockade fence behind the building.
There is, exactly.
But it's the rolling type, not the full-size.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Leonard. Do you want to continue with?
Yeah, well, I, actually, that was the, the final point I wanted to make in, with regards to that, that, that final issue, the, the screening. That was my final point. So with regards to the plan itself, there are some challenges and, and our, my recommendations were just some alternatives. The applicant does have a very skilled architect that I think could come up with some other alternatives, and I do think what you proposed are good points. With regards to the screening, yeah, that, that, you know, we, we referenced this site particularly when we were looking at the Checkers and how we could, we could work with the architect, with that applicant to configure theirs appropriately. And we, we did find that because of the adjacent, the functioning of the adjacent businesses in that case and the residences in this case, screening may not be the best alternative. And the, so the alternative could be for the applicant is to ask for a variance from that standard as well, or you could, I believe you could, the ordinance could allow the plant, to allow you to substitute something for the screening, and if you don't, if you, the screening is necessary, we probably could utilize that standard as well. So that can be a point of discussion, whether the planning commission feels that screening isn't necessary due to the function of the site. With regard to those other, the lighting, I agree that any, any kind of change to the existing lighting will bring the site into substant, more into compliance with our standards, so we reduce the level of non-conformity. So anything proposed, such as you indicated, could be another alternative. Architect could propose something as well. So in the end, we would, even though there are some of these design challenges, depending on how, how comfortable the planning commission is with regards to the site plan issues, site plan approval could be, could be granted contingent upon the applicant, providing a revised site plan that deals with these issues and then obtaining any necessary variances from the ZBA. So those would be the two conditions of approval. But the applicant, yeah, is next up to speak and they could address some of those situations to, to come to a solution.
Well, the, yeah, I, I think that the main issue with the site is the, the parking with the drive-through stacking and the parking on the west side of the parking lot. I don't think by squeezing in the tables a little bit, we can gain enough to make an adequate room for people to back out of a parking spot while there's cars stacked in that lane. I think that would be a problem, but if the applicant is so agreeable to that, we could, I believe, make it a seasonal thing, as you suggested, and have them only open the drive-through during the colder months where there's not that much traffic that parks and walks to the front of the building for their service. Before we go on, is there any other public comments on the application at this time? Yes, sir, would you like to come up?
Yeah. Okay, my name is Mohammed Hadla. I'm the architect. I just wanted to touch on a couple things. We were planning to make this seasonal. That seating area currently is elevated a little bit, so in order for us to shift it over, if that was something that we were thinking, we would have to do a good amount of, you know, cutting and patching and we, we don't, we want to save as much cost as possible. I mean, the whole point of us trying to convert the building into, have a drive-through is because financially it's in trouble, so we, we need to get those, those winter months active. So, you know, we prefer to just keep it seasonal, four or five months out of the year, just the drive-through, than the other months, have people park and close the drive-through down. And then as far as the, the landscaping, I, I did calculate, we have six hundred square feet of landscaping, that's about six percent with that green strip on the side, so we have a good amount of green space. And the gentleman, the owner does decorate it, he, aside from just the grass, he puts potted plants and stuff over there, so, you know, it has a nice neat look to it. The screening you already touched on, dumpster enclosure we already touched on, and then the light fixtures, they are the type that, that you can tilt however much you want, so, you know, I already told them that we could tilt those down a good amount more and still have them being effective and then shield them also. So that was something that we already discussed and we'd like to move forward with doing. Aside from that, I, I don't know, I mean, I'd, I'd leave it to you guys. Do you have anything to say?
Did you have a comment, sir?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to make a comment? Okay, let's move on. Anyone at the table wish to make a comment or have a question about?
I'm in agreement. Would you, the, just the seasonal drive-through, I think, would work just fine?
Yeah, I think if we limit it to four or five months of the year.
You're already willing to do it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I don't, I guess we can make that part of the site plan approval to do that. The other issues would of course be the, the need for the screening. Does everyone, how does everyone feel about the screening? Do we, you feel like they need screening? I mean, I don't think headlights, as you mentioned, are going to bother the, the apartments because their windows don't face that. That's the.
Everything is perpendicular.
It's the side of the building and it's only the parking area back there that would be affected.
I, I think it would be more of a hindrance than anything because of the traffic, because that, that is an active alley.
Yeah, there is a lot of traffic from the rental.
Right, so you've got, you've got guaranteed rental, I mean, we run, our trucks down that alley, and if there was any kind of screening, sometimes you've got to be able to move over to let someone through.
Yeah.
If you were to insist on a screen there, that would just tie stuff up.
Yeah, and I, I don't think landscaping is the key there. I think that would take up more space than, than a wall would probably.
Yeah, and, and I think it would just.
Because, because of the activity of the music store on one side, the rental on the other, and the multi-unit apartment building to the rear, I think putting any kind of screening there, we'd create a problem.
I think we're.
The idea, the purpose of the screening is, is to protect R1 from the effects of a C district, and in this case, it doesn't apply.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I think we can do without the screening, if everyone else is in agreement. As far as the other recommendations, what about the landscaping along the west side of the lot? If anyone feel it?
It's already maintained and it's.
Keep it as a grassy area?
Yeah, it's already there.
He puts potted plants there and everything.
Yeah. Everyone happy with that?
That's right up against garden, so, well, there's pretty limited what you can do.
So landscaping is okay, the screen wall will eliminate. You're going to use a rollable, rollable dumpster, so we don't need the enclosure for that.
Right.
And you're going to reconfigure the lighting fixtures. The, okay, we need to settle on the time of operation of the, the drive-through. What months would be, would you want to operate that in?
It's like, first, I'll go through the 21st of March.
From when to the first of March?
First, I told you the 21st of March.
That would.
It's down in the post months and then, hopefully, maybe a better, better weather.
Yeah.
And do you have a, just a drive-through only sign, so people know?
I don't know. We have a, we, right on our, I guess, our, our sign on side.
Are there also directional indicators for the, the in and out drives stating that they're one-way?
They'll make a sign, multiple large arrows indicating exit or entrance.
Okay.
Maybe in this direction.
That, that would be good. You're still going to need variances on two of the, the items. The, the width of the lot is.
Small.
Too small, according, you know, what the code requires, and the distance between the, the driveways is too close. And while that was okay as it is, since you're updating it and getting a new special land use, now you have to come into compliance there. So we would need to have you go to the zoning board of appeals and request variances on those two items. So if, if everyone's in agreement, if someone would like to, Mr. Steenbur?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. The fact that they can't change the size of that lot, and it's been like that for pretty much the past thirty-nine years that I'm aware of, do they have to go in front of, go in, in front of the board to?
Because they're, they're changing the use and adding a drive-through, they have to do that.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to make an approval contingent upon approval at the other board.
And those items listed in the recommendations that?
Yeah.
We discussed?
Right, right.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Any comments or questions on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Steenbur?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye. Okay, so you can check with Mr. Ortega, he'll tell you how to go about applying for your variance in, on those two items that we discussed, the dimensional variances. And other than that, you're approved, as far as we're concerned, and you also have to wait for city council approval for the special land use. Our recommendation is to approve. Yes?
Can we apply for zoning board of appeals before city council?
Absolutely. We can run it concurrently. Next item, we have PC twenty dash zero zero one, request for site plan approval to renovate site and reoccupy an existing building for a banquet facility restaurant at two nine nine zero one Ford Road in the C two general business district. Mr. Ortega, would you give us your report, please?
As, as has just been mentioned, the applicant is proposing to reoccupy the existing vacant CVS, CVS building, as it's colloquially known, for the, a banquet facility. The site itself is about one point two six acres in area, and it is comprised of the building, the, a portion of the adjacent parking, and the existing stormwater detention pond located on the south side of the site, adjacent to Brant. When looking at this proposed use, the use, given our recent history, we have reiterated that the banquet facility is, meets the definition of, in our zoning ordinance for a restaurant, so therefore, this proposed use in the C two district is permitted by right in the, in, in that district. And then we note that on the, that southeast portion of the site, and it's approximately about seventy-three feet by a hundred and fifty-one feet, that's actually in a, in the VP or vehicular parking zoning district. That's district, that means that that site can only be utilized for, for parking or other parking-related amenities, such as the detention pond. That detention pond exists because it, it currently drains the existing parking lots to the north. With regards to any kind of setback in dimensional requirements, the applicant is not proposing to change, make any additions or cha, or reductions in the existing building footprint, and that building as, as it currently is, is in compliance with all our setback requirements. When it comes to our parking standard, our parking standard for restaurants is one space for every three occupants plus one space per employee, based on the maximum employment shift. And with regards to the site, the, the composition of the parking, let me just back up a minute, just, I'm sure you remember, you all recall, but just to let everyone remember, back in April, the applicant did apply for the use in this building as a, as a banquet facility. And one of the components at that time was the idea that he would be utilizing parking on the east side of Brant, across Brant. He would approve a site over there and, and, so therefore, to meet a parking sta, meet the parking requirements for the proposed capacity within the building. Now, the applicant is not going to be utilizing anything across Brant, they would be utilizing all the property located on their block, south of Ford and west of Brant. And with the, the ownership breakdown of those properties, technically, his property, two nine nine zero one Ford, is the, is the lot, the next price of building, the, some parking spaces, there are forty-four parking spaces on the owner-occupied site in addition to the, the detention pond. And in addition to that, there is an existing parcel that, that is located between the western boundary of the his property and the eastern boundary of the site where Aldi sits. That, that property parcel is, number is in your, is located on my review letter on page two, and there are fifty-four spaces located on that piece of property. And the applicant has indicated that there is a cross-axis sharing agreement with that, those parking spaces, and he, and I have reviewed that, that documentation, and it does provide him with the opportunity to utilize those spaces for his use in that building, two nine nine zero one. And then, so now, the applicant is then proposing to the existing stormwater detention pond to locate, to locate stormwater detention facilities, meaning different tanks and permeable so, material below grade, and then at grade pave the, the area to allow for parking spaces. So then, there will be resulting thirty-two additional parking spaces that it's currently where the existing detention pond is. I do know, do you know that at the, during the previous approval, excuse me, previous I do know, do you know that at the, during the previous approval, excuse me, previous application, the applicant was, uh, when he was asking for approval, was, um... I did a analysis of the existing Aldi and the parking spaces that, that Aldi can, um, have access to. And based on the calculations of our zoning ordinance, the parking spaces located directly north and west of Aldi meet our parking ordinance standards for Aldi on its own. So these fifty-four parking spaces, uh, adjacent to the east of the Aldi, in between Aldi and, and this building are, uh, are extra. Meaning that they, the Aldi's minimum parking spaces required is, is, uh, provided on their property to the, and to the north and east. Just as a note. It's not to say that Aldi customers don't utilize those spaces. It's just to say that for us, for our requirements, they have sufficient parking currently. And, and these fifty-four are utilized in excess and utilized for people to, because it's closer to the door and that sort of thing. As I mentioned, they, I have looked and, looked at and reviewed the parking sharing agreement that does exist for this property. And then with regard to the actual requirements of the banquet hall as proposed, the usable building area is, is eighty-eight thousand seven hundred square feet. And based on a maximum of guests of, uh, three hundred and fifty-four occupants, in addition to twelve employees on the site, that means that, um, a hundred and eighteen parking spaces are required for the occupants of the three hundred and fifty-four occupants. And then twelve spaces are required for the twelve employees that are gonna be on the site. So that's a total of a hundred and thirty parking spaces. So when the applicant, when you add up parking spaces on the site, parking spaces on the shared access par- property, and the new parking spaces on the detention pond, he's providing a hundred and thirty parking spaces. So in that, in that instance, the, the capacity would be met for our minimum parking requirements as with a maximum capacity in the building of three hundred and fifty-four, uh, guests. With regards to the southwest corner site development, uh, the... This is something that is actually typically, can be typically done, having stormwater detention enclosed below grade. We're actually gonna, uh, it was an alternative that I proposed in other sites, but in this case applicant is, uh, now gonna be utilizing it because it's become more cost-effective. In the past, this was something that was, had a high dollar point, but now it's becoming more cost-effective to do this, uh, alternative because of the benefit of having additional parking. So in this case, uh, however, with the site plan as proposed, there aren't any details with regards to the type of equipment that we utilize for stormwater, whether the stormwater calculations indicate how much volume is gonna be necessary, and all the other engineering requirements that we will require in order to make sure that it functions adequately. And it's designed and fun- and constructed and functions adequately. So, um... We would recommend that any approval for, uh, the site plan be contingent upon the applicant submitting, uh, detailed plans, engineering plans that meet all requirements of the city engineer's review, and also receive approval from Wayne County if necessary, uh, for the stormwater. Because Wayne County will most likely require sufficient capacity to be maintained on the site, retained on-site before it's, uh, distributed into our, our, um, system, our storm system. We don't want this to overload our existing system. And it can be designed to make sure that it doesn't do that. So with regards to other requirements on the site that, that are normally applied to all bil- all uses, uh, loading zone is, it can be, uh, utilized if necessary for the applicant. The applicant has indicated there is a, uh, designated a loading zone on the south side of the building. For the dumpster enclosure, there already is an existing dumpster enclosure. Uh, it's in a little bit of disrepair. The applicant's site plan has indicated they'll repair it and bring it up to standard. Regards to the architecture and building design, uh, right now, the building is pretty attractive. It's, it's used masonry materials, got different, uh, articulations and, uh, mix of materials. It seemed pretty attractive. And so we think it's, it's appropriate. Just to reiterate, this site is in our C two zoning district. It doesn't have the CBD, uh, uh, requirements for design. But fortunately, it's a well-designed building. And, and, and then as such is, is still, uh, the applicant has indicated they're gonna maintain that, the look of the existing building. Regarding to outdoor lighting, the site plan has indicated, uh, the location of the existing light poles, uh, they're actually standard, uh, shoebox-type fixtures that are at an ninety-degree angle directed downward, at about twenty-five feet in height. And so, uh... While not... So they, but they pretty much are in conformance with all existing standards. And we just note that any revisions to the, uh, lighting just have to be contingent with the lighting standards in the future. Uh, no signage has been proposed at this time. But when the signage is, uh, applied for, that's under a separate permit. We reviewed administratively and show, and will have to be in compliance with our, or signing standards. With regards to landscaping, the applicant, uh, there's no separate landscape plan for the land, but the applicant has identified the existing landscaping on-site. It's pretty mature 'cause the, 'cause the building was developed a while ago. Uh, we have the quantities and locations of all those species. They're all in generally pretty good health. And they're all pretty significantly, uh, grown in height and circumference and so... But the, the site plan approval process does open them up to any kind of changes you might like to see with regards to landscaping if you feel the need to have any other place on-site. I'm not sure where else it could be put. The only thing I would, would indicate is that, uh, once the, the detention pond on Brant, it has some pretty nice trees, they're pretty significant. Uh, so unfortunately, though, might get damaged as a result of the construction of the parking lot. So we might need to, I don't know if the applicant wants to propose remove, uh, a new landscape plan for that portion 'cause it will be important to screen the parking from the adjacent residents, to ensure that those are, they're screened properly. And that would be the major, the major, uh, issue. So with regards to this application, we do recommend site plan approval contingent upon the applicant, uh, submitting detailed engineering plans that the new city engineer review them and approve them. The, uh, any additional landscaping that you propose, uh, and also that the, uh, application receive, uh, their appropriate approvals from Wayne County.
Okay. Uh, would the applicant like to come up and make comments about your application?
Hello. My name is Avasamr. We are obviously applying to, uh, rezone or re, uh... Rezone into a banquet hall. Really, I mean, you guys covered all the points that we're looking for. In regards to the retention pond, um, I think we included into the plans, uh, some type of shrubbery. 'Cause obviously, um, that would be the east side of that, uh, southeast side, where the cars would be facing. We would actually run either tall shrubbery, um, and/or trees, whatever really is the...
In accordance.
In accordance to the ordinance. I mean, obviously, that wouldn't be too pretty to just leave it exposed. Um, the other two sides are, uh, do have a six-foot tall, uh...
Cinder block.
Cinder block wall currently. That's, um, that's about really much. Everything else is pretty much covered by Mario and yourselves.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, well...
After you.
No, go ahead.
Do you intend to keep the spandrel windows on the building?
So, um, like Mario stated, we're willing to work with the city 'cause I, I've heard so much about that building in regards to that it's, you know, it's pretty and it looks well and it meshes with the entire corridor. So we are very open. We don't have anything set in stone in regards to, um, changing. Our initial plan was to keep it and just kind of update it, you know? Take the existing colors, 'cause we have the actual plans that were, um, built recently, passed away that owned that building. But we actually have the plans with the exact paint, the type of brick that was used. So we are intending to use the same colors, same bricks, and just spruce it up, same material.
How many, uh, shared parking spaces, uh, do you have an agreement for?
So we have fifty-four shared parking spaces.
So the seventeen that are perpendicular plus the, um... Plus the ones that are adjacent to that, that are on a diagonal, those are all shared?
So the one directly, uh, next to the building and the next two are ours. It's, uh, the ones after that, I think it's one or two rows that are after that. Those are the shared ones. We will be having valet for all of our events. So it's, uh, something that we're gonna be adding. So there won't be any high traffic in regards to people pulling in and pulling out. It is gonna be complimentary, um, supplied by our, uh, the banquet hall itself. So that would eliminate a lot of the backed-up and/or, um, you know, just a little chaos. It would kind of control everything.
I like the building as it exists. I'm only asking about the spandrel windows to see if you planned on opening those up for light or any other reason. I would like to see some pretty dense shrubbery along that, uh, new parking area because of its location and...
Of course.
It's gonna be pretty lengthy parking area in that area. I think it would be nice to, to shield that from the rest of the neighborhood.
We actually put on the plans, um, in the, for the entrance, we were going to put an egress, kind of bring it in, and then put shrubbery there as well. So it's going to be blocked on all four sides of the... It's in being cased by shrubbery and/or walls on all four sides.
Okay. Is the front door gonna, or is the doorway gonna stay i- in the existing location?
Uh, currently, yes, yeah.
Yeah. That's all I have. Uh, I did, to clean up the existing landscaping, I, I...
Building's, you know, twenty-some odd years.
It's got nice landscaping and it's a nice building. I just need, think it needs some fluff and buff and it should be good to go after you...
We actually have also all the type of shrubbery that were plotted throughout the entire, um, property. We actually have that entire list. So, um, if the city sees fit that, you know, they actually like that, um, that setup, we would just renew, uh, 'cause a lot of it's, a lot of it's overgrown and unmaintained for, for quite a while.
Yeah. We just wanna, we wanna remaintain the, the whole shrubbery aspect of, uh, of the property.
Yeah.
I like that part.
And we wanna use the same shrubbery that's, that they have right now because it's, it's a nice shrubbery.
Yeah.
Oh, but right now, it's a little bit overgrown. And I don't know how easy it is gonna be for us to maintain that. So either we replace or...
You may not be able to...
Probably, we're gonna end up replacing.
We're gonna probably end up replacing to, for smaller shrubbery, the same style, but just same family, but just smaller size.
And of course, we do apply for that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, with your approval.
Yeah, I, I like it.
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have, uh, comments from the public or questions? Anyone in the audience wishes to make a comment?
I just, uh, Kim Dole, DDA director. I just wanted to comment that as far as any concerns the DDA has had, they've all been satisfied, um, you know, based on, uh, any contingencies that the planning commission puts out there, so... And, uh, hopefully, everything goes through and we welcome another business to the DDA.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay. Uh, next we'll have the commission discussion. I have some things I... First, you currently own the property?
I'm sorry?
Do you currently own the property?
Uh, we're gonna ask for it. Uh, it's contingent on, on the approval, I think.
Contingent, so you have an agreement, though?
Yes. Throw them out of my room.
I have a question about the VP parking district and the setbacks for VP. The, uh, the plan doesn't give me a lot of detail for that, and it's a little small anyway. So, uh, DP parking, I believe, requires a ten-foot setback on both of the walled sides and a thirty-foot setback on the street side. That's not addressed here. And it doesn't appear as if there would be enough room for that with the present, uh, parking configuration.
They would pretty much take out an entire row.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. Do you agree with...
Yeah, I'm taking a look at the, the standards right now in the, in the ordinance. It does have the landscape requirement, oh, buildings direct in the district.
Do they have a similar situation at the floorbound, sir? Ford Road?
Yeah. They got, they had to get a variance. They had to get a variance.
What I'm saying... Yeah, forgive me, I'm not that as familiar 'cause I... We don't have too many big pieces of property zoned VP. And I, in, in my tenure here, I haven't come across any, uh, proposed, the, uh, construction of those. Beyond, and so beyond the, uh... Screening requirements that are typical for all uses, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it has screening requirements, create, that requires the wall on the residential sides.
Right, yeah.
But then on the, uh, on the frontage, it requires a setback equal to the residential frontage on that same street, which would be thirty feet, I believe. So we've got ten feet on the two walled sides, which you do comply with on the end, on the south side, I believe. But not on the, uh, west side.
Right, yeah, there is that ten-foot requirement in paragraph, uh, nine for, uh, provided between the side of rear property line and the edge of the parking lot. Uh, and with regards to the front yard setback, normally, the front yard setback, if it's thirty feet, is applied for when there's a other prop, other, residences fronting on that block. Uh, that's how, 'cause, uh... For corner lots with...
Does it say fronting?
For, I'm sorry? Yeah.
Does it say the residents have to be fronting on that block?
Well, you, uh, whenever it comes to the location, the, the side...
Well, when we have a corner...
Right.
Both sides of that residence are considered fronting.
Right. And then the setback on the corner, uh, is dependent upon if there are other, um, houses on that block that have their front door facing that block. Uh, for example, if, if, when, when you have the corners and if both, uh, houses front on the, like, say, a street to the south and they don't place an interior street, and then the houses to the north actually face northbound and no, no front door is, uh, directed towards that interior line, then the setback is actually nine, I believe. That's a footnote.
I don't think our, uh, ordinance says that.
Well, for the, for the residences, it, it says that. 'Cause I, I've applied that multiple times in, in other districts for residences. Now, whether that applies for parking, I don't know. I have to make sure that, to, to take a look at all the other, uh, dimensional requirements, um, for that.
Well, we'll set that aside for a minute. And, uh, can you, do you, does the city have a copy of the parking and access agreement? That they showed you?
Yes.
Is there, is that dated?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but I, yeah, I do, it's dated, it was assigned.
How long of a period does that cover?
I believe it was in perpetuity.
It is in perpet- it is.
Okay. As long as we have that.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, then going on, um, for the site plan, we have no floor plan and no elevations. Now, you're saying you're not planning on making significant changes to the, uh, building exterior. But... Our ordinance says that, um... The exterior shall be compatible in design with adjacent, adjacent commercial development, which I believe it is now. But we wanna make sure that it stays that way.
Sure, of course.
So we would either like, uh... Architectural elevations or a written statement from you saying that you don't plan on changing it.
We can do that. Um, we didn't, we didn't bring anything like that with us because it would cost us to hire somebody to do that for us and, and we didn't know who would be approved or not for...
I understand, yeah.
But we can suppo-
But we can supply that, it's not an issue.
Okay.
As you mentioned, would it be sufficient just to make a note?
I think it would be sufficient if we had a, a signed letter from them saying, you know, to that effect that...
Rather than having AIA...
They, they were not going to change the exterior significantly.
Without commission approval.
Yeah, rather than have to gin up drawings for an existing building that...
Yeah.
They're not gonna change anything, huh?
I mean, whatever, whatever we're gonna do, what we, we want approval from you guys before we do it. So we will submit the, the proper paperwork and if you like what you see, you say, go on with it. If you don't like what you see, you say, no, you don't change it.
Well, the thing, once we approve it, you know, you can, if we don't have that requirement and...
Absolutely, yeah.
You can, you could go in any direction.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not the law.
So we, we just, we just wanna have a good-looking building, basically.
Absolutely, so do we.
And you do, I'm sure you do too.
That's exactly what we want.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, I have found those, when, when you're ready, I have those, an answer for you with regards to that setback.
Okay.
Okay, so you are correct in that with regards, in the vehicular parking district, uh, paragraph ten does require that when a, where a VP district is continuous to a residentially zoned district, which has common frontage on the same road, meaning corner lot, the minimum front yard setback shall be equal to the required front yard setback for the residential district. A landscape berm shall be required to screen the parking from view of the road in accordance with section one fifty-four eighty-one. So they are required to adhere to the front yard setback requirements in, in paragraph ten of the VP district. And then, when you look at the schedule of regulations, paragraph E, or excuse me, footnote E, um, the setback on side yards facing a street, on corner lots, there shall be maintained a front yard along each road, street frontage, except that the minimum setback on side yards facing a street where no other housing units in the block face a side street shall be nine feet. So that means...
But the, the, uh, the language in the VP section says that it should be equal to the front yard setback.
For...
True. And then, and then the, the front yard setback along a, a side, along, um, each street frontage, and that's what the footnote says, shall be maintain a front yard along each frontage, except that when the minimum setback on, on yards facing a street where no other housing units in the block face the other street shall be nine feet. So, because, because what it's, what it's trying to reference is the idea that if someone's front yard is, uh, that, is that side street, then it makes sense that all, all other yards on that side street, for lack of a better word, should be thirty feet, because it's their front yard and then they have to protect the integrit- integrity of the front yard. But it is factoring in that, right, if there are no homes in that block in which a, uh, it's, that it doesn't function as someone's front yard, then that, that front yard requirement is reduced to nine feet. And so that's, so that the building...
Okay, so we go with, with nine feet.
Correct, and they do have to have a nine-foot setback.
They have to have nine feet on the street side and ten feet on the other side where the wall is.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, which I believe would cut into your parking plan significantly. So what I'm thinking is, that's another area where they would need to have a variance.
Right, and, and it's up to them, because you, you're absolutely right, they have to provide those required setbacks. And they could either possibly do something like alter the, um, parking lot configuration into maybe some type of angled, or restripe it in some way. Uh, maybe it holds, well, and he has one lane, or, or they get a variance. You're right, they, they might have to get a variance from that.
Yeah. Landscaping, uh, basically what we were talking about, uh, I like the current landscaping, but if it needs to be replaced, you know, if we replace it with the same type of landscaping that it now has, I personally think that would be fine. I, I like the trees going down Brant alongside of the, uh, the retention pond. I would like to see trees maintained in that area along with shrubs.
Well, there, there is, that's not a problem, that's not a problem. We have, we have that.
So we, we do need a, a certain amount of green space there, but, uh...
Would we, would it be better served to go with the close spacing on a shrub rather than trees?
Yeah, but those trees are pretty well established and kinda like to see them.
Those trees are, yeah. But if they have to dig that up for a, an underground retention pond, they may have to damage the trees.
Correct, we can't promise we can keep those exact trees.
No, no, I understand.
So they would have to be replaced, yeah.
But what we, but what we wanna do is work with you guys and you guys, if you guys have a certain tree that you want planted, we can always go that, go that route.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we have recommendations for trees if, if...
I mean, either way, we're gonna plant a tree, so, I mean...
Yeah.
Might as well be something that you guys approve and we'll just go with that.
And, and there are standard practices to replace trees, even existing trees that are harmed by construction.
Mm-hmm.
Now, obviously, it factors in the idea that if we're dealing with a thirty-foot tree, we don't require the property owner to go buy a thirty-foot tree.
Buy a thirty-foot tree, right. We understand that it would be a younger tree.
Right, but, but there's a, there's concessions, like, for example, if, if they, if a deciduous tree is like, you know, twenty inches around, then the first six inches, you get a two-inch tree and then the remaining, you get, you know, so usually you get two or three other trees to replace the one larger tree.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, there are definitely some, uh, mathematical equivalents to make sure that any damaged tree gets replaced.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
And it's not onerous to the property.
Yeah, absolutely, that's not a problem, so.
Okay, does anyone else have thought, questions or comments about?
What is the current retention pond service? Does it service Aldi's as well?
I think it services, it services the park, the parking lot.
So are they aware of top building going up? Are they aware of this new parking lot getting put in? If it services Aldi's parking lot too?
Well, I, I was under assumption that the retention pond was for, uh, our building, that's what our engineers told us.
Yeah.
Um, but I can have them double check and see if it alters anything with, with ours to Aldi's, or if it services Aldi's, I should say.
Okay.
But I was under assumption that it's only for the CBS program.
Gotcha, I just can't tell.
And however that...
Civil engineer.
And, yes, exactly, and however the, that drains, like, if it is, the drainage zone is for all those parking spaces, then they'll have to design the, whatever's underground to make sure it, it has that capacity, because they can't reduce that capacity and then suddenly the Aldi one isn't. So whatever, however it functions, it'll continue to function adequately and hopefully, hopefully...
They would come up with the engineering from Wayne County women more.
Right, yeah.
More, uh, what's our, uh, what's our... Okay.
So that's why it's important that any approval is contingent upon engineers, their engineers, city engineers, and then Wayne County approve it, so that way we're not creating any kind of situation.
Yes.
The area, the, uh, the parking lot, I'm pretty sure those trees are probably gonna be damaged because they're gonna have a significant root system. So I got a feeling they're all gonna go away in the process of doing the excavation and everything necessary to create this parking. I'd like to see shrubs closely spaced in there. Uh, I think they're juniper or something, I don't, yeah. They're fairly skinny, but they're fairly tall. I think that would provide a, a nice screening to, to screen that significant amount of parking from that side street.
Well, it would screen the lighting, but I don't think the lighting is such a problem there. I think what we're looking for is more of the aesthetic appearance of having those trees, which I think makes a much nicer statement than some, uh, some smaller junipers. So I, I don't, I'm not opposed to spacing some shrubs in between the trees, but I, I would like to see the trees maintained.
Yeah, maybe a combination of both.
Yeah. But it's gonna depend on how much of a...
They're not gonna have much.
How much space they have after, uh, the parking lot is redesigned or the, uh... They figure out how much we have left over after the setbacks are included.
Currently, there's fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet now? Well, that side would only require nine feet.
Right.
So there's plenty of space to, to plant, uh, between trees and shrubbery. Feel shrubbery to just block the actual car's path and/or lighting or that might, uh, reflect off of the, the car's curb.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the name of the business? Is it Legacy Fall Room and Reception Hall?
Um, uh, initially, it started off as Legacy Fall Room and then we added the Reception Hall.
So that's the name of the, that's what the signage is gonna be eventually?
Uh, again, we, we are probably gonna, we're in the process of acquiring a different name. We want to hopefully acquire a, a whole thing, well, a whole town, it was called the Grand Pavilion.
Okay.
Uh, but as of now, it's still Legacy Fall Room and Reception.
Okay, thank you.
So they are, or they aren't gonna need a parking variance. Where did we end up with it?
Something's gotta, something's, something's gotta change with the parking. Either they have to re, they have to comply with the setback requirement, which means they have to have a ten-foot setback along the west side by the wall. You already have ten feet on the south end. You only need nine feet on the street side. So the ten-foot on the west side is the, the part that's the issue. And either you need to reconfigure the parking to allow for that or possibly apply for a variance to, uh, to remove that. We, we have a screen wall, so I think that takes care of most of the issue there. I'm not sure what the additional ten-foot, um...
And it's in good repair.
Yeah. But, uh, that's gotta be addressed one, one way or another.
So we're looking at engineering from Wayne County. We're looking at clean up or replace existing landscaping and we're looking at a combination of trees and shrubs on the east, east side of the new parking area and then a parking variance, uh, if they can't, uh, reconfigure the parking lot to accommodate the number of spots they need.
Yeah. And I believe that, oh, I also would like some kind of documentation, uh, as far as the appearance of the exterior of the building, just to, okay. Any other, uh... Since we don't have, uh, a final decision on the VP parking situation and the setbacks, uh, can we make that approval, uh, with your, you handling it administratively, either for variance or a redesigned parking?
Yes. Because, and to let you know, anytime, any kind of approval from you is contingent upon a revised site plan. If that revised site plan doesn't do specifically what you request, then, and then I inform the applicants, they either have to come back to you to, to, to have you take a look at what they proposed, or then they, I make them go get a variance. So in that, in this case, they would either have to comply with all the setback standards of the VP or then go to the BZBA.
Okay. Well, I think we're pretty well set then. If someone would like to...
I'd like to make a motion to approve with either a parking variance or reconfiguring the lot to accommodate that. And along that eastern edge of that, uh, new parking area, I'd like to see a combination of trees and shrubs and to clean up the existing landscaping and replace as necessary at your discretion. Uh, engineering approval from Wayne County to determine the proper valve size for the drainage of that and the correct volume.
For the design, the design of the, uh, underground retention.
Right, and then, um, a statement on your final drawings that you turn in, um, that states the building's gonna stay at the same configuration that it is now architecturally speaking on the exterior. And then the idea of that is to avoid having you make, uh, eighteen AIA certified engineering drawings, which is what normally would be required, because this building is fine the way that it is. So we just need a statement, you're not gonna change the brick that orange or...
Oh, yeah.
Something, something exoticly different from what it is now. Support, was I succinct enough there?
You wanna read that back, Brian?
So I have requests for site plan approval to renovate site and reoccupy existing building for a banquet facility at two nine nine oh one Ford Road in the C two general business district, with the condition that applicant, uh, engineering plans meet all requirements of city engineer review, stormwater detention approval from Wayne County, applicant complying with planning landscape, planning commission landscape recommendations with combination of trees and shrubs on east side and maintenance of current landscaping, reconfiguration of parking or variance application, and signed documentation from applicant stating they will maintain the integrity of the building architecture.
One difference, um, I don't see it as necessary to have landscaping on the west wall, the, the masonry wall to the west side of that parking, new parking area.
Oh, well, it depends if they end up with the, uh...
Let's see what the reconfiguration comes up with.
Yeah.
Let's see how this is gonna shake out.
Yeah.
Because if they get a clear, if they get a variance, then fine, it doesn't need anything, but if they have to reconfigure, let's try to...
Okay.
Then it might be appropriate to put some shrubs in there or something?
Right.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we're all clear on that now?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Take the roll.
Commissioner Steenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Toledo?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
I'm abstaining, maybe looking at this at the, uh, DDA. Okay, your site plan is approved with those, uh, conditions, so if you'd like to get together with Mr. Ortega and work things out.
Thank you, guys, thank you guys very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, other business. Zoning ordinance amendment, discussion of revised amendment language for permitting, or permitted and special approval uses in the M one light industrial zoning district and other, uh, potential ordinance amendments.
So I, I know there was nothing provided in your packet, because, uh, this, this particular, um, effort is, is becau- is a little bit of a moving target, because, um, I've been having discussions with, uh, the administration, uh, and also with, uh, Matt Clerk, who also is a certified planner, and with some various council members, and, and they feel that there are some, uh, ordinances that need to be amended, uh, to, to, and to do that relatively quickly. So trying to look at either a top ten or maybe like a top five, uh, ordinance, changes that could, could substantially benefit the, the business community and the residents in, in their, um, and how they wanna develop, similar to how we dealt with the, uh, side yards, side yard fencing and allowed people to enclose their screen, their, their side yard doors, so that way they can let out their dogs and, and that sort of thing. And there are definitely, uh, we developed a, a list, and so what I have for you right now is, um, I'll just hand this out, it's a little bit of homework for you, it's just the first attempt at looking at that first issue I brought up, which was, uh, the list of permitted uses in the industrial. The first issue we wanted to address is trying to look at expanding the, uh, the breadth of uses that could be permitted within the industrial district. The first issue we wanted to address is trying to look at expanding the, the breadth of uses that could be permitted within the industrial district. So that way, existing properties could, could open up the opportunity for tenants. Because for, and, and also so that certain tenants could come to the city. Cause for example, I'm in a conversation with some recreational users located in Livonia and other adjacent communities. And they're finding a tough time trying to find a place to occupy, to, to establish their martial arts facility or their recreation or their like CrossFit facility or those type of uses. And it's actually, in most modern zoning ordinances, they do allow those for in industrial districts because the buildings in the industrial districts typically have higher roofs and more open spaces and easier spans. That makes it easier for them to conduct these type of recreation activities. Where they need to throw very, very large wheels, or they need to whip around sharp akele blades or whatever it is that they do, they find it that industrial buildings fit that need. And if we can meet the needs of tenants that wanna come to Garden City, and we meet the needs of property owners to open up more tenant availability, that's something we can do. So this ordinance, this draft in front of you first takes a look at defining what a private recreation use is. Mainly just being these type of, you know, physical exercise, organized classes, martial arts, personal training, that sort of thing. And then also take this opportunity to clean up some of the lit, the language in the M1 district's light manufacturing list of uses, because if you look at this list, it gets into very specifics with regards to manufacturing of pottery, manufacturing assembly of musical instrument, toys, novellas, sporting goods, photographic equipment. You know, it gets it, you know, pharmaceuticals, toy allergies, food products, sauerkraut. It's very specific. Whereas what we wanna do is just say, all right, as long as you manufacture, you know, you're assembling, processing, and packaging something, whether it be a component like a car part, or whether it be a final product that goes to a consumer, as long as you're doing all that activity inside a clo, an enclosed building, you're permitted, you should be permitted by right in our light manufacturing district. Because when they do that type of activity in an enclosed building, we can make sure that the noise and the, and all the other activities of a manufacturer aren't gonna be at such a scale that it's gonna impact residents that are admittedly in close proximity to our resident, our industrial district. So this...
Would we do that as a special use?
Well...
Or as a change in, in, in the zoning definition?
Yeah, right now, it's a, it would be a change in the zoning definition and change in the list of permitted uses. So that's how, right now I'm proposing it, but you know, as we've done before, we'll have discussions, you tell me what you want, and I'll make the language work how you want it to work. But I do think by doing this, I don't necessarily get restricted. There are some places that does allow me to, to interpret when someone comes in and say, hey, I wanna contribute, construct drones. You know, this list, just because this doesn't say drones, doesn't mean I'm gonna restrict them. But there's ways to clean up the language. It's, it's an effort called lean zoning. Lean zoning is the ability to take a look at past regulations, clean them up, don't make them so specific, but still have the protections that residents wanna have for all these types of uses. So that's, that's the first effort. Some other things we're looking at that, so in next month I'll provide are, just today, talked to Matt about the idea that some of our residential design standards for single-family homes, they, they, they don't necessarily protect a lot of the open space that we typically wanna have on lots, on single-family homes. Sometimes people, when they have a lot of residents on a site, or you know, their families are larger, their homes are larger, they tend to pave over more and more of their site. We don't list impervious surface as part of the lot coverage requirement, which is, which is typical sometimes in other communities. But other communities sometimes regulate that. We don't have any kind of regulation, whether it comes to someone who wants to keep paving and paving and paving and have large amounts of swaths of asphalt or concrete. Now, obviously, what we, what would we be suggesting is some type of regulation that allows for property owners to use the property how they want, but making sure they still use it for the single-family residential use that is permitted predominantly in the city. So for example, there's some sites out there that first they start out with a normal driveway, and then they wanna have a circular driveway, cause they have a teenager staying at home, so park more cars. And then they need more parking spaces on-site, so that way they, the, the drive aisles are clear. So they tend to do more and more and more hard surface, and then before you know it, their entire front yard is almost concrete. That's not to say that, so, so I would take an attempt at mod, creating a regulation to make sure that that doesn't occur in the future. So that's another topic. Some other topics are to residential design standards. Last year, we had some single-family homes used, constructed that were very, let's just say, lacking in architectural detail. They're very similar possibly to when the past was called a mobile home park, mobile home unit. And it's not necessarily doing a lot in terms of compatibility with adjacent homes. People spend a lot of time doing additions, making, doing nice porches, nice, take care of their rubes, and then... So it creates a certain character in area, but then someone just builds four walls and a stoop. And you know, that's not necessarily something that needs to be in the single-family residential district. So it wouldn't be anything that's too onerous, but it'd take a look at what we currently have, cause believe it or not, we have ordinance, regulations, and tweaking them a little bit more to allow for creativity, allow for people to design things without needing an architect or a historic, you know, but at the same time, making sure that there's some character to new homes.
We just wanted to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood.
Right. And so simple things like this could be, even though I know sometimes I can be going on and on about these kinda things, it could be very simple language, such as, "An evaluation of the existing architectural styles of homes within a thousand feet will be considered." And that's it. And then so that way you're looking at adjacent homes to see what's, what's compatible.
Yeah, just, well, just like, we don't have architectural standards in the C2, but we do have language that says it has to be compatible with other buildings in that area.
Right.
So gives us a little bit of leeway to look at what they're doing.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's another topic. So what will I do next month, next month is provide you with a schedule of what we're looking at. You know, rather than have multiple, multitudes of individual ordinances and multiple public hearings, we'll try and bundle them together and maybe have just one public hearing, a quarter or something to that effect. So maybe over the course of the year, we'll have three or four different efforts to revise the zoning ordinance. To make it leaner and more...
Yeah, one thing I, I think we should look at, and it came up tonight with the setback in, in vehicular parking. We ran into that same thing with the VP over on Gilman recently. I, I see no reason to have a ten-foot setback inside a six-foot block wall.
Right.
So maybe we could remove that requirement.
We had something similar in the, in the not-too-distant past with the phlebotomy clinic on Ford Road that was seeking extra parking. It was a little different, but...
Yeah, but the dentist office wanted to put up a parking lot, but that cut in a good percentage of his parking space because he would've had to have a ten-foot, a setback inside. And I believe we, he got a variance for that and didn't have to do it, but...
Right.
I don't see any reason to have that requirement. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Not a block wall.
No, you've already got a block wall.
I think I'd like to leave it in, but I, I think in, there's a lot of applications where the variance is gonna be an acceptable way to do it.
Yeah, but every time you have to go for a variance, there's a possibility they may not get it. And it's another step, and more money for them to pay out that I don't think they should have to do, because I see no real reason to do that. When you've already got a, a six-foot screen wall there, why do you have to back them up ten feet off that screen wall?
And, and the ordinance already has set precedent for letting you decide as, like a case-by-case basis, what's required for screening. So maybe sometimes, because it's adjacent to residents, and the, the residents are very concerned about... Some residents don't wanna look at a brick wall. Sometimes they wanna look at the rare, some landscaping.
We ran into that with the condos.
Right.
They, they absolutely did not want any kinda masonry structure.
So, so the ordinance language can be tweaked to offer it as an either-or, where you make the decision as to what's applicable. So that way you avoid going to the ZBA. You also avoid, from my standpoint, I necessarily wanna have, give a right to a piece of property in perpetuity that runs of the land forever. I'd rather that they get a site plan approval that, that is, that is appropriate for that site after you evaluate it. And it gives you the option to do an either-or, and so therefore it's not arbitrary either. So applicant doesn't feel like they're being picked on, because why do I have to construct a six-foot wall when you gave this other person nothing? It'll be, could be an either-or. So those are just examples, and I welcome any kind of exam, uh, ideas for amendments that you see in your history, cause you guys have working, this is the document you deal with, and, and so anything you see that you'd like to see changed, feel free to let me know, and we can incorporate that into the list.
Yeah, Mike.
Maybe we could put that on the first top five that we review. The setbacks. He talked about doing a group of five, and maybe we could put that in that list.
Yeah, I think it should be in there somewhere.
We're always running into parking issues.
Yeah. The VP parking is an issue that's not gonna go away, you know?
No.
People are gonna look at trying to use that more and more.
Yeah.
They're always...
To put roadblocks and impediments into removing parking, I don't think's a good thing.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners' comments? Mr. Kalitas? Nothing? Nothing?
Nothing, thank you. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year. That's it.
Oh, Mario?
I just said I, I hope you like the, the kind of new format we went with for the agenda. The intent is to provide information to the public before they have to, before they speak. So that way they know, that, that hopefully their questions get answered. And then also that they can ask poignant questions when the public hearing happens. Some other ideas, we were just kicking back and forth this today, was the idea of maybe we're gonna require the applicants to provide their plans on boards and put them in the back of the room at a meeting. So that way applicants, so private citizens can come. This information is already available to them at, at City Hall, but if they can't make it, let it, let them get up close and personal with plans that you see.
Yeah.
And so that way they...
At least if they put the elevations.
Yeah.
And maybe a floor plan.
So this is just a tweak of the agenda. Hopefully it'll be more efficient.
Yeah, I think it works fairly well.
We need twice as much ink to put check marks.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the only thing.
Uh, Brian?
Yep. So just an update on the training session that we have scheduled. I know Commissioner Walsh said you won't be able to make it. It is Saturday, January twenty-fifth. It's gonna be right here at City Hall. I'm thinking we're gonna be in the conference room or here, but I'll be here. I can direct you where to go. And it's from nine AM till one thirty PM. So I was just confirming, can everybody else make it on that Saturday?
Yeah.
Let's see.
You will, yes? Yes.
Yeah.
Let's see, let's see. Yes.
Okay, and I'll call our two absent ones and confirm.
Okay, and can you notify or contact the CBA members?
Yes. Yeah, so what I'll do is the open spots that we have, cause we have nine open, there's nine spots total. So depending on how many are open after planning gets first option at it, I'll let you know, I'll contact zoning, and we'll fill it out with them.
Okay. Uh, Mario, did you, have you received any information about the LA Fitness?
Yes, actually. We just, actually today, we received plans assigned by our engineer, signed off on the approval of it from the city engineer, just today. The only thing they were looking for is one final condition about existing, existing water main, water, water line that DPW was able to address. So that's all signed off, and through a chain...
MDOT approved it?
Exactly. And that's the last thing was that according to a, a chain of emails from the applicant indicated that MDOT had seen their traffic study and agreed that the boulevard was a better, it was overall improvement. So we just today emailed them, can you please provide us with a copy of MDOT's approval?
Right.
Cause as soon as they do that, then they just have to, we just, now we just need the MDOT letter saying they approve and having them pay the permit fee, and then the permit will be issued.
That's terrific.
Absolutely.
Has there been any news about DTE and McDonald's?
Nah, not to my knowledge.
No? Okay. Well, the next regular planning commission meeting is Thursday, February thirteenth, 2020. And if there's no other business, someone makes a motion to adjourn? Yes, Mayor.
First off, I wanna thank you guys for serving, and I commend you for looking at these ordinance amendments. Anytime we can streamline, somebody wanting to open a business in Garden City from the day they apply to the day they cut the ribbon is fantastic. We wanna, but we wanna still maintain the integrity of the way the business looks and the way our city looks. But like that setback, that's a perfect example. I mean, there's stuff that we can clean up. Why should they have to pay more money and then wait for a ZBA meeting? It just, the process drags out. We wanna try to streamline it when we can, and I just commend you guys for doing that. And we've done it with the city charter. I mean, there's stuff in the charter and some of these ordinances that goes back to the nineteen seventies that just doesn't apply today. We're, we're 2020 now. Some, some stuff needs to be cleaned up. So I commend you guys for looking at that, and again, if we can streamline and still keep the integrity of the way the city looks, fantastic. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.